Good afternoon and welcome to the regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners on August the 15th, 2024. I apologize for being two minutes late coming up here. We will begin our meeting with invocation from Sister Jane Schell, correctly, Schell, Church of the Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and that will be followed by the Pledges of Allegiance led by Commissioner, we will not be read by Commissioner Wizinut, and we will please stand if you're able. So, Sister.
Father, which are in heaven, we are so grateful together, together this day and for that great love for us, thy children, we're grateful, Father, for those who are here, who are serving our community and for the time and efforts they spend in bringing harmony and unity to the citizens of Forsyth County. We're so grateful, Father, for this time that we have to discuss the needs and those things that are important to help us to live in unity and love and support in one another. We pray, Father, that thou will bless us and bless us that we might have thy Spirit to be upon us and that thy grace may be with us, that we might feel thy love for us. And we pray for the citizens of Forsyth County and pray that thou will bless them, that we might work together and support each other and be mindful of one another. In these things we pray for humbly in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sister Schell, thank you for being here today. Very kind. Citizens who are wishing to participate in the public session portion of the meeting today, you actually may do so by telephone, 336-422-1200, and you will be placed on hold until the public session begins. Members of the audience who are interested in participating in the public session here today, you just need to fill out a little speaker card. They're actually located just outside the door on a small table. We do have a couple of public hearings today, and you will be able to participate right during the public hearing part if you are here to speak at one of them, and they are coming right up. First item on the agenda is a public hearing on the zoning petition of Renaissance Child Care from LOL to GOL, and Chris Murphy will give us a very brief overview, and then we will have our public hearing.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the County Commission. Yes, as the chairman did state, this is a request of Renaissance Child Care to rezon on a 1.91 acre tract located at the southeast intersection of Stires Ferry Road and Kenny Road, and the request is to rezon the property from LOL to GOL or General Office Limited Use. This is the subject property shown on the countywide growth and management area plan map. It is located in GMA III suburban neighborhoods just to the northeast of an activity center there along Lewisville Clemens Road at 421. This is the subject property shown in yellow on the zoning map. You notice it is zoned LOL, and it is adjacent to an RM12S use, and that use is also for a child daycare center. This is the subject property outlined in yellow. On the countywide imagery, you see US 421 there to the south. Again, it is close to that intersection. Again, this property has previously been developed as an office and was most recently used as a child daycare center, and it is adjacent to a child daycare center. Subject property shown on the West Suburban Area Plan update, and it's shown as institutional use. Here is an image looking at the subject property from Kenny Road. This is looking east along Kenny Road. The subject property is to the right. Looking west along Kenny Road, the subject property is to the left, and this is looking directly across Kenny Road from the subject property. The request generally conforms to the recommendations of Legacy 2030 and the West Suburban Area Plan update. The request proposes to redevelop an existing childcare facility at this location, and that is convenient to area residents. The request is inconsistent with the parcel specific recommendation for the subject property in that this is not an institutional zoning district, but it is an institutional use for, so for that reason, we feel like it is consistent with the plan. They are requesting to add the use to the existing uses, and they're asking for the use childcare drop-in. This was heard by the planning board at their June 13th, 2024 public hearing. There were no speakers in opposition, and following the public hearing, the planning board did recommend approval of this to the commissioners by a unanimous vote. And with that, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chris? Thank you. This is a public hearing, and speakers will have up to 15 minutes total to speak in favor of this request and up to 15 minutes total to speak in opposition. And is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? I declare the public hearing closed, and do we have a motion?
Need approval.
Have a motion by Vice Chair Wizinut. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Second item on the agenda is a public hearing on a text amendment proposed by Planning and Development Services staff to modify Chapters 3, 5, 6, and 11 of the Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, pertaining to revised standards for daycare users, uses, excuse me. And Chris, again, our Planning and Development Services Director will give a brief overview of the request.
Thank you again. As the chairman did say, this is a text amendment to amend Chapters 3, 5, 6, and 11 of the UDO to revise standards for child and adult daycare uses. The amendment was prompted by change in state regulations for family childcare homes, which allowed for an expanded capacity from eight to 10 children. There is a shortage in available childcare services, so that also helped provide this impetus. With our comp plan meetings that we've been having around the community over the last year, we have heard consistently the need for other, more childcare options. So, we took this as an opportunity to review and revise the regulations for all of our daycare uses. Staff did conduct a review of our peer communities. Two cities allow for a maximum of 15 children to receive daycare in residential setting. Three allow up to eight. Our UDO is unique in that we have currently, up to this point, had two different uses for child daycare services, small home and large home. Within the triad, both Greensboro and High Point allow in-residence childcare services by right with conditions within their residential districts, and all of our peer communities allow commercial daycare uses by right within their common non-residential districts. And that's something that we have not been doing. We have required most, all daycares to go to a planning board review as opposed to it just being reviewed and approved by our zoning plans review staff. So, this amendment does expand the number of zoning districts in which daycare uses are allowed by right. All daycare uses under this amendment would be allowed by right within all non-residential zoning districts except GI. Currently, some of the daycare uses require, as I just mentioned, either a planning board review or a special use permit from the Board of Adjustment prior to establishing a daycare. This amendment also combines our current uses of small home and large home daycare into a single use now called child daycare home. These would be allowed by right in all zoning districts, again, except GI. The child daycare home use is limited to being established in private residences and as an accessory use to churches and religious institutions. There is another change. Capacity of the child daycare home use is between three and 12 children when any child is preschool age and up to 15 children when all children are school age. So, that is a slight change in the numbers from what we currently have. The amendment also alters standards for daycare accessory uses to allow churches to either operate the daycare themselves or to allow a private entity to operate it within their own walls. So, it doesn't have to be operated by the church itself. Generally, in summary, we feel like that these revisions will encourage the establishment or expansion of our current daycare uses and allow for more. This could improve our economy. As I mentioned the last two times I briefed this, the Triad Business Journal just did an article about three weeks ago talking about the lack of affordable childcare being a hindrance to economic development. Anyway, staff believes that these revisions simplify the ordinance for users and bring us into alignment with our peer communities. This was heard by the planning board back in March. There were no speakers in opposition, and the planning board did vote unanimously to recommend approval of this request, and the city council adopted this back in May. So, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chris?
I don't have a question, but if we do approve this, could you keep us posted if there, how many increases there are in daycare?
Yes.
I hope this works.
Me too.
Any other questions? Alrighty. This is a public hearing. Speakers will have up to 15 minutes total to speak in favor of this request and up to 15 minutes total to speak in opposition. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? I declare the public hearing closed, and is there a motion?
Need approval.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinut.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Limble. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving legislative goals and submission of such goals to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners for consideration at its Legislative Goals Conference, and our county attorney, Gordon Watkins, will give us a brief overview of the goals. Thank you, Gordon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Board members. We discussed these goals two weeks ago, and the general process is that this board may submit the goals. The deadline is a week from tomorrow. It will then go to the steering committees, the NCACC, the Legislative Goals Committee, and finally, the NCACC Board of Directors before the conference in November in which all of the counties will come together to approve these goals. These goals are for the next biennium, the long session starting in January 2025. Two weeks ago, I had, before you, were suggested seven state goals and three federal goals. There was some discussion in particular about North Carolina Goal Number One, and so that language, at the end of that, was streamlined per your suggestions. There was also some discussion about State Goal Number Seven, which dealt with the Leandro decision, and as several of you correctly pointed out, Leandro is sort of a moving target at this point. So, that language was also streamlined. I believe in a bit, the chairman may have some suggestion for that, for the number seven. The final goal was added at the suggestion of the vice chair after the address by Judge Steve Lifeman of Miami-Dade County. At the NCACC conference last week, he spoke very eloquently about the efforts down there regarding mental health issues and ways to address it, both pre-arrest, so people with mental health issues, not as many of them end up in correctional institutions, and also reentry programs when people with mental illnesses are coming back into society. Kevin Leonard, Executive Director of the NCACC, indicated that he has started conversations with various organizations in the state to see if that's something we can work together collaboratively to either replicate or take the best parts of in North Carolina. And so, this goal is to address that. And so, that's the added one. So, those are the only changes that have been made. And I'm happy to entertain any questions. These are your goals, so if there are any changes or you want to make, that's certainly, certainly up to you all.
I'd like to make one, just very, it's a fairly minor editorial change to Goal Seven, that basically, the change would read, "Support legislation to fulfill the state's duty to provide all children with the opportunity to receive a sound, basic education, comma, making," here's the addition, "making increased support for pre-K education the first priority." That was the only part of that. I guess we're at a point now. Any other discussions, questions for Gordon's?
Could you read that again? I'm sorry.
Yes. "Support legislation to fulfill the state's duty to provide all children with the opportunity to receive a sound, basic education, comma," this is the new part, "making increased support for pre-K education the first priority," as you get into that.
Mr. Chairman, would you consider making that read a high priority rather than the first priority?
Sure. That's fine. I just think that's important to, there are a lot of things in Leandro. Leandro has a lot of moving parts, but the state is involved in pre-K education. They need to do more. In fact, one of the many Leandro cases dealt particularly with pre-K education individually, so.
I agree. I just would worry a bit if it was identified as the sole, you know, priority and number one place that some people would misinterpret that as, are suggesting that it was the only one we were asking to have better funding.
Yeah, no problem. To support for pre-K edu, let's see, "making increased support for pre-K education a high priority."
Thank you.
Yeah, good work for me. Any other suggested changes, or everybody's okay with that?
Well, Chairman, yes, I'm okay with that. But speaking of goals, the question that I have for you, Gordon, or maybe Chantel can help me. The legislative liaison, the lobbyist, Ashley?
Yes.
Is she still with us?
She is.
And how do we measure, not saying that she's not done an impeccable job, because she has, but how do we measure in terms of outcomes relative to the goals that we submit to the state, her net worth?
So, I'll just say, I'll let the manager answer that, but my part of that, I'll say, is these are goals we're submitting to the NCACC to hopefully be part of state goals for the whole NCACC. There may be, there will be many other goals that you want to follow, that you want to pursue, that may not be amenable to all 100 counties, but I'll defer to the manager about the evaluation.
Yeah, and I would say Ms. Perkinsen has been very successful since she started as our lobbyist, and I know I've heard personally from at least two legislators about her kind of impeccable relationships on both sides of the aisle in the state. So, she is very reputable. I think she has been able to push a lot of our agendas for other goals that the commissioners have had. And Gordon and I meet with her weekly when there are things that are really kind of happening, and so she stays really connected in Raleigh and give us updates and vice versa. So, I think she's doing a great job, and we'll continue to just kind of monitor progress.
Perfect. That's what I wanted to hear.
And I would maybe add, just looking, just looking at the briefing session for September the 5th, actually, her contract is on that, is on for renewal, and it'd be a perfect time. She'd be here. We could even talk more about that. I know that there's a dollar saying, you can't, the dollars that come back to Forsyth County, you know, our lobbyist is not 100% responsible for those. However, she has advocated for those things, and we do have at least a scorecard of what's coming back in terms of things that are new that have cash value, supporting parks, for example, and sewers, for example, and those kind of things.
I just wanted to know what that mechanism looked like.
September 5th is a projected contract discussion date for that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for Gordon, or anything about our list of goals going to the North Carolina ACC?
Chairman, I do have a question just around, I guess, the procedure by which as local commissioners that we try to make suggestions to be submitted to NCACC, and I may, pardon me if I was remiss in not knowing whatever that procedure is. I think, you know, just since seeing these, the last meeting, I'm pretty much in agreement. But, you know, one of the goals that I think this community definitely would be happy to see is something that's very specific around the state commitment to teacher pay, and I know we can kind of infer that in Leandro, but I think it would be, you know, I think, very strategic for us to, as a body, to definitely support, you know, making sure the state know that as county commissioners. Ideally, we support public school education that then, of course, provides higher pay for educators, which I don't see specifically. Again, you can infer it in the Leandro. So, I guess the question is, how do we kind of weigh in individually as commissioners around these goals?
Well, I would think that if we wanted to have a, I think probably individually, we'll not go to NCACC. That's kind of individually what you would do, our own legislative delegation and on our own conversations with our lobbyists. And obviously, teacher salaries are a high priority across the board. I think if you wanted to have a ninth item on the local goals part that would talk about increased resources for teachers, this is the time to do it. We're submitting our list as a body to them a week from tomorrow. So, I think what goes on for our group. Individually, we can talk, you can talk to any legislature anytime about things of your own personal concern.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, again, this is just to submit for the NCACC conference, which will happen in November. When you all decide what you want to take to our individual local delegation, that could be a completely different list. And a lot of what Ms. Perkinsen has focused on has been capital projects, and she's been, as the manager stated, she's been very successful with those. So, if there was something Forsyth wants to do regarding teacher pay or whatever issue, that's something that you can revisit and you can do, you know, later on, next January, February, March, whenever it is, we go to Raleigh and speak to our people, or we do that through our lobbyist. We can certainly, you can certainly instruct her as to what you would like her to pursue.
Thank you. I'll follow your direction with, the best time to submit that is something for all of us to consider to move towards our Forsyth County delegation.
Alrighty. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion to adopt this list of legislative goals to be submitted to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners?
As you revised that number seven.
Yeah, with the revision, including the high priority for pre-K education and number seven.
Motion approved.
Commissioner Bessie makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. I didn't want to say Commissioner Tanya, I apologize. Commissioner McDaniel, and had a little moment lapse. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the meeting on July 25th, 2024. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, do we have any callers or speaker cards?
Mr. Chairman, we do not.
Alrighty, thank you. Happy to turn the meeting over to County Manager Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, Commissioner's staff and guests. These items have been briefed at least twice for you and questions hopefully appropriately answered. Agenda item number six, this agenda item is a resolution authorizing submission of the fiscal year 2425 Home and Community Care Block Grant, County Funding Plan for Older Adults, and authorizing execution of necessary documents to submit the plan for state approval. This item provides funding to seven community service providers.
Need approval.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinut.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number seven is an amendment to the fiscal year 2425 Budget Ordinance to appropriate fund balance for Family Justice Center Security Cameras. This is in an amount of $16,900 and was approved as a Pago project that didn't get started in FY24.
Motion.
Need to approve.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
We'll take Agenda Items Eight through Eleven together. They are all amendments to the FY25 Budget Ordinance to appropriate funds from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Number Eight is to appropriate $231,802 for Agreement Addendum 719 for the Bridge Access Program for COVID-19 Vaccines. Number Nine is to appropriate $746,644 for Agreement Addendum 546, Communicable Disease Pandemic Recovery. Number Ten is to appropriate $50,000 for Agreement Addendum 121, that's ARPA-TSF Public Health Services, and Number Eleven is to appropriate $63,421 for Agreement Addendum 403 for the WIC program.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt, second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
We can take agenda items number 12 and 13 together, as both are temporary employment contracts for the Department of Public Health. Number 12 is in agreement with the Bradley Group to provide temporary services for grant-funded programs in an amount of $94,902, and 13 is in agreement with Medic Staffing Solutions to provide support to the clinical operations at the Department of Public Health, not to exceed $115,000.
Is there a motion?
Approved.
Motion approved by Commissioner Bessie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 14 is a resolution authorizing execution of a $425,000 agreement with Holologic Sales and Service to provide use, maintenance, and support of laboratory equipment and purchase of reagents and laboratory supplies.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt. Any discussion?
I do have a question about this company. Is this company a local company?
I do not believe they are local, but all of, but in order for our lab to run, we need these particular supplies. I believe it is a sole source, but I do not believe they are local.
So they kind of provide something that is hard to--
That is correct. It's lab equipment. Okay.
Other discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 15 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of COVID-19 vaccines from Moderna U.S. Inc., Pfizer Inc., and Novavax Inc., totaling $150,000.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 16 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of non-influenza vaccines from Sanofi Pasteur Inc., using the NCAP Infuse Group Purchasing Organization. This is not to exceed $215,000.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Agenda item number 17 is a resolution ratifying and authorizing execution of a $16,000 interlocal agreement between Forsyth County and Davidson County on behalf of their respective health departments for Forsyth County to provide laboratory testing services to Davidson County.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 18 is a resolution ratifying and authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement not to exceed $206,081 between Forsyth County and Guilford County for the Improving Community Outcomes for Maternal and Child Health Program.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 19 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Proprio LLC for telephonic written and virtual interpretation services in an amount not to exceed $66,000.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel. Be happy to second that. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 20 is a resolution authorizing execution of a two-year agreement between Forsyth County and the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Social Services specifying the mandated performance requirements and administrative responsibilities with regard to all social service programs other than medical assistance.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 21 is a resolution ratifying and authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement between Forsyth County and the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education for Comprehensive School Public Health Nursing Services for medically fragile and special needs children in an amount not to exceed $478,564.29.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 22 is a resolution ratifying and authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement between Forsyth County and the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education for the Provision of School Resource Officer Deputy Services. This covers 25 schools in an amount of $4,732,610.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel. Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 23 is a resolution awarding a contract to Capital Marketing Solutions LLC to provide ballot printing and packaging services for the Forsyth County Board of Elections. The contract amount is $97,600.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt.
Second.
Second.
Okay. We have a second by Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion?
When will the ballots be printed?
That's a great question. I don't know for sure.
I will get that answer. I don't see our elections director here, but I'll follow up with him and get you all an answer. I'm not sure.
Before early voting is probably a safe bet. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 24 is a resolution approving purchase of EZIO intraosseous vascular access devices from Teleflex LLC by Forsyth County Emergency Services, a division of the Department of Emergency Services. This is a sole source purchase for $68,835.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt, second by Commissioner Bessie. Was that correct? Okay. Any discussion?
It's a bone needle.
It's right, the bone needle, right. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 25 is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to an agreement with Schindler Elevator Corporation for Elevator and Escalator Maintenance Services. This covers the addition of 11 elevators and two escalators at a cost of $49,423.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 26 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Textron Easy Go LLC and a lease agreement with PNC Bank National Association for Lease of Golf Courts for Tanglewood Park. This is a five-year agreement for 82 electric golf carts at a cost not to exceed $610,585.20.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt. Is there a second? Be happy to second that. Had a lot of questions about it, but they were answered. Any discussion? Any other discussion?
Just a quick question. This primarily is covered by the fees that are paid. Is that correct?
I'm going to get our Parks Director, Chris Weevil, to come up.
In terms of, you know, recovery of revenue?
Yes, sir, and we've made that adjustment for our FY '25 budget. We adjusted those fees to cover that cost.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 27 is a resolution selecting and authorizing execution of a contract with Kleinfelter Inc. to provide construction materials, testing, and special inspection services for the 4001 North Liberty Street EDA Grant Project in an amount not to exceed $95,000.
Is there a motion? Be happy to make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 28 is a resolution authorizing execution of a lease agreement between Forsyth County and the State of North Carolina on behalf of its Department of Public Safety for Lease of County-Owned Property Located at 5580 Sturmer Park Circle. This is a three-year agreement with a rental rate of $1, and the tenant is required to maintain the facility up to $25,000 per year.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 29 is a resolution authorizing execution of a lease agreement between Forsyth County and the State of North Carolina on behalf of the Department of Public Safety for Lease of County-Owned Property Located at 301 North Church Street. This is a three-year agreement. The rental rate is $19.19 per square foot and annual rent amount of $25,330.8, and reimburses the county for its operational expenses and construction costs for the space.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt. Second. Happy to second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 30 is a resolution authorizing execution of a lease agreement between Forsyth County and the City of Winston-Salem for the lease of space in a county-owned building located at 741 Highland Avenue. This is a short-term lease until the city's permanent space is ready. It's 550 square feet at a monthly rental rate of $256.67.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel. Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 31 is a resolution declaring certain county-owned personal property surplus and authorizing its disposition by Public Electronic Auction Utilizing Liquidity Services Operations LLC. This allows us to sell surplus personal property. The sale will begin on August 26 and end on September 9.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Linville. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Agenda item number 32 is a resolution approving refunds by the Tax Assessor Collector in the amount of $14,108.94.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
We can take 33 and 34 together. 33 is the May 2024 Human Resources Report, and 34 is the June 2024 Human Resources Report.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel. Happy to second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 35 has three parts. A is an amendment to the 2021 Pago Capital Projects Ordinance to transfer $2.4 million to the 2016 Parks Facilities Capital Projects Ordinance for the Forsyth County Multi-Use Agricultural Event Center. B is an amendment to the 2016 Parks Facilities Capital Projects Ordinance to appropriate $5 million from the State of North Carolina and accept a transfer from the 2021 Pago Capital Projects Ordinance for the Forsyth County Multi-Use Agricultural Event Center. And C is a resolution authorizing the execution of a grant agreement with the North Carolina Office of Budget and Management for the Forsyth County Agricultural Park Complex. This agenda item essentially combines the capital projects ordinances, which now has a total project budget of $20 million for the Ag Park Complex. It also allows staff to execute grant agreements with the state for the $5 million that they appropriated to us.
Is there a motion?
They're moved.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linville. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we can take agenda items 36 and 37 together. These were added after a closed session regarding personnel matters. 36 is a resolution adjusting the compensation of the county attorney, and 37 is the resolution adjusting the compensation of the clerks of the Board of County Commissioners.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt. Happy to second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Before we adjourn, was there, did you have something--
I did not see one hand.
Oh, sorry. Did you raise your hand?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I have one thing before we adjourn I wanted to mention. I think most of the people in this room know that we hosted the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference here last week, and I wanted to just mention a couple of general broad thank-yous. We did host four off-site visits at the Central Library, the Sheriff's Office, the Detention Center, and the Courthouse. And we also hosted a pretty outstanding reception at the New Collidium Children's Museum. I do want to thank the planning committee, was Ashley Matthews, Roslyn Covington, Chantel Robinson, and Ed McNeil. And I asked Ashley to send me a list of all the staff who helped with the conference, and that list included 48 staff members, by the way. Sent them a particular thank-you note yesterday, and we had several local sponsors, Chamber Commerce and Calvin McCray from Greater Winston-Salem Inc. actually helped with particularly the reception at Collidium. Stephanie Pace Brown at Visit Winston-Salem actually helped with some of our, we had a lot of, sort of a welcome bag to all the 650 participants, and she helped raise some dollars for that. Jason Thiel, actually from the downtown Winston-Salem Partnership, actually was able to secure a number of discounts for local businesses that were included in the coupons, if you will, in that, in that bag. And Hayward Garner from Garner Foods, we actually had a little Texas Pete sauce in the bag, so that worked really well. I want to thank all those sponsors. And finally, I'd like to take a moment to congratulate Vice Chair Wizard Hunt, who was inducted into the North Carolina Association County Commissioners Hall of Fame. Now, I just want to give you that little flavor of that. The Hall of Fame was formed in 2011, and at that time, there were seven former commissioners in that first class. So it was kind of a look back. Got a lot of folks that were selected, former governors, legislators, and others who at one time were county commissioners. And now we're in 2024, there's a total of 30 commissioners. So it's been, it's not like, you know, it's one or two a year, and so we have a total of 30 commissioners in the Hall of Fame, and it recognizes service to the state, national organizations, to local government, and to the citizens of North Carolina. And I did go through with the list and sort of counted that there are only nine women in that 30 in the Hall of Fame, so special congratulations to Vice Chair Wizard Hunt.
Thank you very much.
All righty. I think we will stand adjourned and get ready for what, are we ready to move forward pretty quickly to our briefing session? Thank you.
We can begin, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Welcome again to the August 15, 2024 briefing. This is a briefing for the first meeting, I mean, for our meeting September the 5th, 2024, first briefing. We have one discussion item before we review the items, and Annie Vasquez is going to come and talk to us a minute or two about Narcan supplies in the school district. And thank you for being here. We haven't had to spend too much time out of the office, I know that we are this--
Yes. Thank you guys for having me. I wanted to quickly give an update. As some of you may know, in May of this year, the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board voted on a policy to allow Narcan in each school that they have. We, as a county, decided to give them that Narcan to alleviate their budget pressures. And I'm happy to report, in the short, very time, we have all of their nurses trained on how to administer Narcan, as well as all Narcan in the school system. Each school will have at least one, and many of them will have more than one for the bigger campuses that have multiple buildings on campus. So we got that done in the time of summer, and we're really excited. Happy to answer any questions.
That's good. Thank you for doing that. I'm glad that they're there.
Thank you.
And I hope, and I hope we don't need them.
Me too.
All right, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn the meeting over to our county manager to go over the expected items for the first briefing for the September 5th, 2024 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will just briefly introduce these items, but we do have two public hearings on September 5th. The first one is a public hearing on the Site Plan Amendment of Billy Rose Robertson, Generation Skipping family trust, Hugh Robertson and William Robertson, and an ordinance amending the Forsyth County Zoting Ordinance, approval of a special use district permit, and approval of a site plan. Our planning director, Chris Murphy, will brief this item.
It was on here twice, for some reason, I'm not exactly sure, so I apologize, I'm looking dumbfounded. Good afternoon again, as the county manager mentioned, this is case F-1642, it's a 24.6 acre tract on the east side of South Main Street, Jones Road. This will look familiar to a number of you, this was rezoned several years ago to RM8S for a 118-unit townhome project, they're coming back now and changing that to a 94-lot single-family PRD, they're keeping the zoning the same, this is a site plan amendment, the used single-family residential is allowed in RM8S, but this is a site plan amendment to change their site plan from 118-unit townhome project to a 94-lot single-family project. Again, this is located in GMA 3, down in the south-central part of Forsyth County, it is just south of 52, it is along South Main Street, south of the old Slit's slash Stro's Brewery, on the corner of Jones and South Main, across from Fishel. This is a subject property highlighted in yellow, again, notice it was rezoned several, a couple of years ago to RM8S. Subject property shown on the countywide aerial imagery, and is predominantly wooded currently. This is the subject property shown on the South Suburban Area Plan Update, a recommendation of single-family, even though that's what the area plan recommends, we don't go back and revise the maps, but as you do approve rezonings, this technically is now recommended for low-density attached product, but the map has not been modified accordingly. Looking east at the subject property from South Main Street, looking north at the subject property from Jones Road, this is looking north along South Main Street, the subject property would be to the right. This is looking south along South Main Street, the subject property is to the left. And this is looking west along Jones Road, the subject property is to the right. This is looking east along Jones Road, the subject property is to the left. This is the proposed site plan, again, changing from 118 townhomes to 94 single-family lots, believe your staff report may be, may say 95, but I believe during the process, it got reduced one additional lot because of a change they had to make, but mid-90s. The request is consistent with the general recommendations of legacy in the South Suburban Area Plan Update, the request would extend the public sewer along South Main Street, which would provide more growth opportunities in the serviceable land area. The request has access to two roads with excess traffic capacity. This was heard by the planning board at their July 11, 2024 public hearing, there were no speakers in opposition, and following the public hearing, the planning board did vote unanimously to recommend approval. I do want to allude a little bit to this image and to the note here dealing with sewer. If you'll recall, whenever this came through, the first time a couple of years ago, they were going to use a private lift station. As part of this development, I believe they're actually going to be increasing the elevation, they're going to be bringing in some field, this will actually be gravity sewer, so there will be no private lift station here, this will all be gravity-fed back to the sewer main, so there won't be a lift station, so there won't be those maintenance headaches in the future. So I did want to point that out to the commissioners. With that, I'm glad to answer any questions.
That's an improvement, any questions for Chris?
Agenda item number two is a public hearing to consider the expenditure of county general funds for an economic development project and authorizing an agreement with the company. And part B is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of county general funds for an economic development project and to apply for state of North Carolina programs to aid and encourage the location of a company in Forsyth County and authorizing execution of an economic development agreement. Hosani Mitchell from our Community and Economic Development Department will introduce this item.
Well, thank you, Madam Manager, and good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This item is for a public hearing to consider performance-based economic development incentives to assist the company looking to locate here in Forsyth County, and we'll address the company as Project Coal Robbie. And of course, during the public hearing, we will provide a full presentation detailing the company name as well as pertinent information, but this company is a produce wholesaler and distributor, they serve the mid-Atlantic region, and they service several industries, including schools, prisons, restaurants, and local growers. And the company is expanding, and they're looking to locate in a facility here in Winston-Salem. It's a 165,000-square-foot facility that will serve their expansion needs, the company is looking to add additional ripening rooms as well as additional lines for cutting and chopping. They are considering other locations in Columbia, South Carolina, as well as Charlotte, North Carolina. Project Coal Robbie, the company is looking to invest a capital investment of $6,250,000, and that's divided into machinery and equipment and real property. This $6.25 million investment would generate at least 165 new full-time jobs in our county, and those new jobs have an average salary of $55,542 per year. It is important to note that the company is planning to move a large portion of its existing staff into our county, and so the total job count is 300, at least 305 jobs, but we are incentivizing the 165 new jobs. Take a look at the county's incentive package, this is a standard five-year incentive, and the county's incentive would not exceed $88,749, and that's over a period of five years. Like I said, it is located in the city, and so the city of Winston-Salem is proposing incentives, state of North Carolina is proposing incentives, the Community College Customized Training Program is proposing support as well. Company does intend to partner with all of our workforce development partners, but once again, we'll detail the company name as well as pertinent company details during the public hearing, happy to answer any questions.
Any general questions for Hosani? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Agenda items number three through five are special resolutions. Number three is a resolution recognizing September as National Infant Mortality Awareness Month in support of the 13th Annual Walk 'Em Out to Save Our Babies in Forsyth County. Staff from public health will be here to accept this resolution on September 5. Number four is a resolution designating a Forsyth County official to make recommendations to the North Carolina Alcohol Beverage Control Commission on ABC permit applications. This is an item that the board previously approved, Chief Deputy Henry Gray to be that person, his current title with the ABC Commission is Major Gray, he's since been promoted, and they will not allow him to do applications with the wrong title. Agenda item number five is a resolution acknowledging notice from Beeson Crossroads Fire and Rescue of its intent to purchase capital property valued at over $10,000 and approving the purchase pursuant to Section 12 of the January 1, 2021 agreement between the county and Beeson Crossroads. This is essentially their intention to purchase a fire truck, and they'll be here to brief this item. Six are meeting minutes from today, which the clerk's office will get out to you all. And then we have several budget finance items. Number seven is an amendment to the fiscal year 25 budget ordinance to transfer behavioral health funds for the Community Paramedic Mobile Integrated Health Program to the Pandemic Response Special Revenue Fund, and part B is an amendment to the Pandemic Response Special Revenue Fund to accept a transfer from the Behavioral Health Subfund for the Community Paramedic Program. Our deputy manager Denise Price is going to brief this item. Number eight is an amendment to the fiscal year 25 budget ordinance to appropriate health improvement dollars to the Employee Health Benefits Internal Service Fund. Nine is an amendment to the 2016 Schools Capital Projects Ordinance for East Forsyth High School. Ten is an amendment to the 2022 Blues Lake Park Capital Projects Ordinance to appropriate a Duke Energy Foundation grant for interpretive signage. Eleven is an amendment to the 2016 Collidium Capital Projects Ordinance to appropriate funding from Collidium to restore elements removed through value engineering process. Twelve is an amendment to the fiscal year 25 budget ordinance to appropriate fund balance for the King Fire Tax District. And then we have one grant item, number 13 is a resolution adopting a community grant funding policy to aid in administering community grant funds for nonprofit organizations. This is a follow-up to the presentation Ayesha Carter did a few weeks ago. If you do have any changes you want to make to this policy, please, please let us know, I'll attach it in my weekly update to you all, so if you have suggestions, let us know. And just so that you know, in the next agenda cycle, following that, we'll have an item to appropriate some dollars for staff support in order to be able to implement this policy if you all so approve it. Agenda item number 14 is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to the agreement between Community Care Center for Forsyth County to hire two full-time staff to expand behavioral health services using ARPA funds. This is just an amendment to the current agreement that they have, no additional funding, it's just extending the time so they can utilize the funds. We have several contracts. Fifteen is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the agreement with Wake Forest University Health Sciences on behalf of its Department of Medicine for Medical Director Services. And B is an amendment to the fiscal year 25 budget ordinance to appropriate $14,834 of reserved behavioral health services fund balance for added mobile integrated healthcare services. This is essentially adding a small portion of medical director services for our mobile integrated health team that's been moved under behavioral health services to ensure that we're getting proper direction for mental health substance use support that we're doing in the community. Agenda item number 16 is a resolution authorizing a second-term extension on the agreement between Forsyth County and Seth Palmetier, doing business as Motivated Metal. This is the art project at the Kernersville Clemens, sorry, I always get it confused, at the Clemens Library. Agenda item number 17 is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to the agreement between Forsyth County and Vincent Valuations, LLC for real estate appraisal services. Eighteen is a resolution approving the renewal of DocuSign Enterprise Electronic Digital Signature Services. Nineteen is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the agreement with Axon Enterprise, Inc. for law enforcement body worn cameras, in-vehicle cameras, tasers, and related services. And 20 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with Perkins Law Firm for lobbying services at the North Carolina General Assembly. Again, we can have Ashley, we'll ask Ashley Perkins to come, and she can talk more about the services that she provides. Agenda item number 21 is a resolution authorizing execution of an art loan agreement to Old Salem, doing business as Old Salem Museums and Gardens. Twenty-two and 23 are refunds by the tax assessor and collector, and then we have reports. And that is it, Mr. Chairman.
I do have a question, County Manager Robinson, about the property matters. So could you be more specific around this art loan agreement to Old Salem as it relates to, are we loaning them money for what?
We are not loaning them money, I'll have Kirby Robinson talk more about this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you for the question. As we've cleaned out the Hall of Justice, we've found all sorts of treasures, and so we have a couple of things there that have some historical and cultural significance, and I think this is a bust of Bishop Spainhour, and I'm getting some head nods, that's correct. So we reached out and said, you know, who would like to display this? We did not find a use within the county, Old Salem seemed an appropriate place, so it's simply just loaning that bust to them for display. Thank you.
And all I have left, Mr. Chairman, is a closed-session motion.
Could you read the motion, we'll act.
Okay, I need to ask the board to consider a motion to go into closed session to discuss two matters, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6. And since there is no other business to come before the board at this meeting, following the closed session, the meeting will be adjourned.
I'll make that motion, is there a second? Second by Vice Chair Wizenhut, all in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, and we stand adjourned.